All right, I'd like to welcome you into our city council meeting tonight. Let's begin. I'll rise for the pledge. We're going to begin with item number one, our consent agenda. On our consent agenda, we have the minutes for the council, August 16th. Park and Rec Commission, August 10th. Planning Commission, August 11th. Library Board, August 23rd. License exempt gambling permit for St. Francis Xavier Catholic Church and the regular bills. Would anyone wish to make a motion?
I'd make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Motion by Marv. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. We have on our agenda tonight Mike Bogle from 1453 Fourth Avenue, and we have the hazardous building order to discuss. So, Mike, why don't you have a seat up there? All right, just a little thing for the public. Mike has given an agenda request form, and so he's on the agenda tonight regarding his house at 1453 Fourth Avenue, in a modification of raise order on the property. So that's where we're at today, and he gave us a letter that talked about the work that he's done and that. So I'll give you a chance, Mike, to say a few words.
Okay, I assume everybody or all the councils read, so I don't have to go through that again. One of the, well anyhow, since the raise order, I have torn down a major part, probably the more damaged parts of the structure, and I've put in place cattle panels with warning tape on top of it through the openings, and the front door is able to be secured also. One of the things that was discussed is the hazardous condition, and I believe that although obviously nothing, especially construction, is 100%, I've made it pretty difficult that people can't just walk in there. The fence is fairly substantial. One of the concerns possibly that you would have is would I have the finances to rebuild it if I was able to? I have a, my boss, who has a large farm, he's well-heeled, I've worked for him for 20 years, he has offered to finance me or front me the money when I need it for construction. Also have, when I got out of Vietnam, I did three years of cement work, so I'm capable of doing all kinds of basement work. I built the basement for the addition that is under question tonight. I've done, I did some, I did a summer of framing in Montana, Puls in Montana. I worked for Berg Electric, I did basic house wiring for him. I know how to do sheet roofing, I've done a lot of roofing, and so I would be doing most of the work myself. I have a good friend who's a contractor who I can consult when I have questions or problems. So I guess what the point I'm making is that if we can modify the raise order, I believe that I'm capable financially and physically to do whatever has to be done. One of my concerns is that my addition is obviously basically brand-new, and I probably have several thousand books in there. I owned 12,000 books when my house burned. I was able to relocate many, you know, maybe half of them to a location, but also my personal belongings in there, and my garage has my freezers in it, my electrical panel meter, which I spent $850 last spring having that installed, is underneath the, is on the wall, one of the best walls actually in the house, and the part of the house has the best foundation underneath my roof that I put over my patio last summer, or summer before, I forget. So.
Okay. Just want to let the council know that I did stop at the property of Mike Bogle, and he was gracious enough to show me. I got to see firsthand, I was, actually, I saw the new addition he's speaking of as it was being built, and it was, it was undamaged by the fire at all. It's kind of a separate part of it, and so, you know, just want you to know that I've been the person, I don't know if any of you have been there, but maybe you've talked to Mike, and I'd like to hear your comments for a moment.
I have a question for you, Mike. Why are you looking to modify the order tonight when it's still in effect for a while?
You mean, it's in effect until the end of October? Well, I got it preempted, I mean, if I, I mean, plus I want to start doing foundation work this fall, so I want to get the modifications. The problem is right now with the raise order, Andy can't give me a building permit even if he wanted to, so I'm hoping and, yeah.
So the, you understand, of course, but for our audience, the raise order doesn't even possibly go into effect till the end of October, what, October 30th? 31st. It's, then it would be an option to do or not to do, and you're saying that if you don't get the raise order lifted, then you can't get a permit to start working on the foundation?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions from council?
I guess, you know, you've been here, Mike, twice, talking about this property. You were here one time earlier, talking about this property, yep. So now you're here again. The order doesn't end like they were saying till October 31st, but I feel like you're looking for us to make some decision, which the court kind of already made that decision, and I feel like we've kind of already been to that point where it's not safe and that it does need to come down, and I just, I feel like you're looking for an answer now tonight for you, and if I were to make that vote right now tonight, it would be that I feel that it's unsafe. I drive by it multiple times every day. I'm not a building inspector, but just by driving by your property, it looks very unsafe. I would not want children, pets, anything going near that. I feel like if a strong wind came up, that one wall could just go over. I don't know that cattle panels are enough to kind of keep that, and if we get snow or anything else, you know, that's going to come down.
Did you read my, what I submitted?
Yes.
What, the west wall, the purpose of leaving that up is, at least temporarily, is to make it safer, so, and also to make it much more, so it doesn't look so bad. If that was gone, the rest of the property would look a lot worse, so that's kind of a false front, almost like a movie set, and it is fairly safe, and I will brace it some more, but it's, I don't think, anyhow, obviously, any construction site is not 100% secure. It isn't like a house, even your house with a door and a lock, if somebody's determined to get in, can get in through a window or whatever, so the idea that it has to be, you know, completely safe is just not realistic.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it doesn't appear safe right now, but I don't think, I don't feel that that's something that really, I think it needs to just come down and start fresh. I don't feel that with the fire, all the water that was put in that, I'm even thinking your, the basement, every, you know, how much water was in there?
The basement has, about half of it is sandy floor, so the water went down fairly quickly. As far as the hazardous condition, Andy was on the property here a week or so ago, and he could address that. I mean, I think it is, but you can ask him, because he was actually there and Jason was there, and just driving by it, I don't think there's a, is a proper way to assess it.
Okay, I'm just saying my thoughts on if you were to ask for us to vote tonight where I'm sitting, so that you hear some kind of feedback. I feel like last time you were here, you presented stuff, but we didn't give you any feedback, and so I'm just offering you my feedback for tonight and where I sit, okay?
I was unaware that it wasn't going to be voted on in the first meeting, because I don't know how this system works, so.
All right, so, so the thing that Mike was hoping before the end of October, to get the raise order lifted, to enable him to get a permit possibly. So does the council wish to take any action to, yes, Lisa?
I, just a question for you. Did you have homeowner's insurance on this property?
No, I didn't, because I had a wood stove, it was, makes it a lot more expensive, and I just, I lived there for 20 years, burned wood the whole time, and I don't know, no, I didn't. But, I mean, that's obviously not good, but I do have access to financing, so I will be able to rebuild it if I can.
I guess, I'm just thinking, you know, you said in your letter you have a meager salary of 20,000, and I guess my thought is, why not just sell the land and just, you know, if you're 73, you know, move to an apartment, you have the lower income, not have to worry about all the stress of the rebuild and how you're going to pay back and snow and lawn mowing and et cetera. You know, I'm just kind of thinking, why work so hard at this point in life?
Well, I also have two building, two-story garage and a building that have a lot of stuff in them. I have a lot of memories there. My parents bought it in 73, I've lived there for 20 years, lots of memories. As far as stress, I don't think I could handle an apartment, I wouldn't want to live if I had to go to a high-rise or something. I just, I'm so used to having my own place, and I, people have suggested that, but to me, that is not an option. Even if I lost the whole place, I would never go to, to an apartment. I would rather live in a tent, actually.
Lisa, and do you have anything else? Okay. Oh, sorry, Jim.
You want to lift that, if they did it to, say, if we did do that, and then you got a building permit from Andy, what kind of timeframe are you looking at, man? I, you know, I just, I just don't understand that, I just, to me. Plus, there's still a lot to do on the house there, as it is.
I would, are you done with your question? Yeah, I'm getting a late start. What I would like to do this fall is put in the foundation, whatever is needed, then next spring, I believe that I could, if I get an early start, I can probably get it done in one summer. But one reason I want to keep the floor in place temporarily, Andy feels that it's not safe, and it's probably true, I mean, it's safe to walk in, but it can't be reused probably, is to keep it from filling with snow, so I can work later in the fall and earlier in the spring. So I, that would be, what I would desire is, I think I could have it done by the end of next summer. The problem with the delay was I lost almost a whole year waiting for a structural engineer to look at it. There was a lot to do, although I could have done a lot more if I'd, anyhow, that's probably the timeframe I'm looking at, which is. Yeah, obviously, by next fall, even if I didn't have it completely finished, I mean, inside, it would, the walls and ceiling would be, or the walls and roof would be on, you know, it would be secure. I probably wouldn't have it finished inside.
So the answer you're looking for, Marv, you're next.
How many, how many days has it been since you had the fire?
It'll be two years, February 5th, and I, and of course, the delay partly, obviously, it was tall below the night of the fire, so they had huge piles of debris out in front and the side, and it was frozen down, so I had to wait kind of till it started thaw. It was actually pretty warm the last day I cleaned it up, and there was still a sheet ice on the ground underneath it. So, and then I went to work on the debris on the top, on the floor, second floor, and that was quite substantial. Like I say, I own 12,000 books. So I've kind of proceeded, whenever I know I can do something and it's, I, you know, work on it. I also work part-time on a turkey farm, so I didn't like to have every day. In Minnesota, a year is not the same as a year in Florida, although there's heat down there, but you, you know, you have rain and you have snow and you have, I have a job, so it isn't like I just, that's the only thing I have to do. Plus, I have to have a life, I have friends, and I, you know, I spend time with people.
Marv, something else?
Yeah, in your mind, you, do you believe that the site currently is prepared, right now, it's cleaned up and ready to build?
Well, there'll be some, yes and no. I need to start, the foundation on the north side was in bad shape to begin with, it wasn't, had nothing to do with the fire or the water. The water might be a bit, a little bit, but not substantially. If I get a building permit to build the foundation, that's what I'm going to do initially, then from that point, then I would have to raise the, or take the floor up, and then we'd have to decide on the west wall, that's up to Andy, and, but the floor, anyhow, I can't, I don't, I don't want to tear, if I tear anything more down right now without starting to build the foundation, it's going to make the property much more hazardous, because it'll be much more open, it'll obviously, and it'll be much more ugly to look at, so.
So are there any other questions or comments at the moment?
I guess I have a comment. 73 is young, so I understand, I understand you got to, you know, but I won't quit working either.
I am quite healthy, I can still, at the farm, I can still work circles around the young guys, so. I've taken really good care of myself, I was, ran the distance running most of my life till I had a hip replacement, plus I've, I've eaten healthy since I was 20 years old, so.
So it does.
Yeah, I just, I'm not a typical 73-year-old. Of my class, I think about 30 of us are dead already, so.
Does the council wish to take any action, meaning, take some action to get rid of the raise order, you know, allowing Mr. Bogle to start working and getting the permit to do this stuff? That's the question tonight. Does any council wish to do anything like that?
To be clear, Councilmember Sherman, it would be the city going to court, requesting the court to modify the raise order. We just can't.
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
And if we did that, then what would happen? I mean, is it, is it something that, are you opening a Pandora's box, or are you, you know, pretty hard to put the genie back in the bottle, I guess?
Well, it's up to you guys, hold on a second.
Okay.
Hold on a second. So it would just be like Steve clarified, making a motion to bring it to the next stage to see if the court would go ahead and do that?
The city is the one who requested that action on hazardous building, which was then, you know, initialized by the court, the council taking action, deeming it as a hazardous property. So essentially, you would be saying it is not hazardous property, and then petition the court to drop that order. That's really where you're at. And, Andy, please correct me if I'm wrong.
All right. If anyone wishes to take action, let me know, yes, Lisa?
I was just wondering, what is, how long does this take? I mean, like, how long would it take the city? And is there a timeframe? Because the longer we draw this out, the longer that house is sitting there looking like it is, and then the reconstruction is getting more and more delayed, and...
To answer Council, Councilperson Faring's question, I don't know exactly how long it would take, it depends on the court schedule and scheduling time back at the court. So I, it wouldn't be very quick, I mean, I'm not anticipating if you made, if you made a vote this evening, we talk to city attorney, city attorney prepare the motion and the paperwork, get it into the court, you know, whether it would be a week or a month, two months, you know, I don't know how long it would take to schedule the court, but that would obviously get us into October if it was three or four weeks out, and that's fairly close to when, you know, we've got the original date, so, but I take your point of sooner than later.
And so if we don't vote to have the raise order lifted, then what is the next step?
The next step would be on the 31st of October, which is when the raise order goes into effect, the property would be visited by the building official and take a look at it and see if it met the conditions of removing the hazardous structure per the code and the order, and then yes or no, then that determination would be brought to the council, because if you then want to execute the raise order, we would need approval and allocation of funds to go forward and execute that raise order. The raise order is simply permission to go on the property to take that action. So you're not obligated to do it by the court order, the court order provides you permission to do it, and so we would, you know, essentially be waiting till that October 31st, make a determination, bring it to you, and then you would determine whether or not we proceed.
And a good question for you, Steve, also, is if the city had decided to take that action at that point, how much would it cost the city?
Yeah, I don't think we've got, got an estimate on it yet, because Mr. Bogle has been working on it, taking personal property out, tearing out stuff as he's going, so the conditions continually change, so until we really get closer to that point in time, we probably won't have that until we know exactly what we're doing.
Fair enough. All right, one last time, does any council member wish to take an action tonight? I'm sitting as the acting mayor, Mayor Protem, tonight, I don't initiate that, so, all right. Mike, tonight is, they've chose not to take any action tonight, so I do thank you for coming, and you can continue to work, and we will certainly have the building inspector take a look at that in the coming days.
Is Andy going to comment tonight on the hazardous condition of the property? I mean, he could do it anytime, I guess, but...
I would be okay if he came up and said a brief comment about that. Is that something that you'd be willing to do tonight for a moment, or is that preemptive?
Yeah, I, I don't know how much I'm going to comment on it, but if you have specific questions for me, I would certainly answer them. I did visit the property a while ago, and I saw what, what work he had done, and I saw what work still remained. I think, in general, I think Mike has, he's removed the roof structure, the second floor structure, all the exterior walls except the additions that he wants to save, and the west wall, the foundation, and the main floor still stay. I think he's to the point where he realizes that the foundation and the floor need to be removed. Really what he's asking for is to be able to replace them, leave them in place while he replaces them, but as far as the hazardous condition, I think the imminent danger is gone compared to what it was with the roof and the second floor being, being removed, but I agree with Jenny a little bit that, that west wall is, is still just kind of there, it's, it's braced in place, and he says he'll brace it more, but it's certainly not a complete structure. I think it still meets the definition of a hazardous structure, the order from the court is that the hazardous structure be removed, and the, the structure that the council declared hazardous still remains. So I guess if you have specific questions, I'll answer them, I don't know that I have any more information than what Steve has already provided.
No problem, thank you for sharing as much as you can at the moment.
And then if he took that front wall down, regardless of what it looks like, doesn't make a darn bit of difference, he's removed the hazardous end of it?
No, because the floor and the foundation and the structure that was hazardous still remain. I mean, the hazardous definition is, Mike is taking it very literal, he thinks nobody can get in, it's not hazardous, but the statute that we went to court under, anything that because of dilapidation, inadequate maintenance, unsafe, unsanitary, not fit for human habitation is considered a hazardous structure, and it certainly meets that definition, yeah.
Thank you very much. So, oh, Lisa?
In your professional opinion, do you feel that what is left of the structure is something that would be able to be fixed, or is it something that you feel would be more so needed to be demolished and rebuilt?
Well, aside from the addition, because I, I think that was fairly untouched by the fire and everything else, and that is pretty well intact, the remaining structure needs to be removed. It's, there's, there's really no fix at this point, it's remove and replace, which I think he intends to do, he just wants to leave it in place until he can remove it and replace it, I guess, if that makes sense. I don't know that he wants to repair the foundation wall, he wants to take a wall out and replace it while the floor is, like he said, still above him, so he can work during more inclement weather.
Okay, thank you, Andy. We have a path forward, Mike, you're of course listening, thank you for coming and sharing, and thank you, council, for taking the time to discuss that. All right, we'll continue on with our meeting, and Mr. Bogle, thank you for coming, and I guess you know the path forward. Let's go on to agenda item number three, any department heads tonight?
Jason Sikora, Electrical Superintendent. Just want to let the council and the public know that it's been in the paper, Shopper, I think it's been out on the radio a couple times, we're going to possibly do some robo-calls, it's on Channel 3, but we're going to do planned maintenance outage on the incoming transmission line where it drops down into the substation. During our annual maintenance checkup on the substation, a jumper coming down from the transmission line was found to be extremely warm, now, I'm talking somewhere in the 700 degree Fahrenheit. So to not have an unplanned outage that would be extended, we just want to plan an outage. So we are planning on taking, taking the whole city off of the electrical grid, and we're going to run what we can on generation. We have limited generation, so we're going to plan on keeping stoplights, railroad crossings, you know, critical infrastructure online, so it'll mostly be residential areas on the outskirts of town that will probably experience an actual outage. But the outage time is planned from 3:00 to 5:00 a.m. on Sunday morning, so.
September 11th?
September, yep, September 11th on Sunday, 3:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m.
It's not going to be a total outage for some people in the city, right?
Right.
Okay, so you...
Some will remain on, we can, we can run our, our generation plant and keep some areas of town on, but we don't have enough capacity.
Do you have any encouragement for people as far as their electrical usage during that time? Okay.
It's 3:00 a.m., we're, everybody will be as conservative as they can be at that point, I believe.
I only have one friend that I know that will be up at that time, so.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, we're on to our bid award, Wyndham Power Plant Generating Equipment. Can you take that away?
So staff and the Utility Commission have been working on replacing some generation since we retired an older piece of equipment. Just recently, the capacity market went crazy, so we kind of sped up our process of replacing our generation. So the, the commission winner decided to go out for bids on generation. We're looking for two, about three megawatt units to purchase, we received three bids, one really wasn't qualified bid because it doesn't meet the EPA air standards. three bids, one really wasn't a qualified bid because it doesn't meet the EPA air standards. And then we had two other bidders come in. Um but the uh the recommendation from DGR and the commission is for the council to approve purchasing two two point eight, two five megawatt generators and uh associated equipment for three million, four hundred sixty eight thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. Oh, yeah, and engineer was rec recommended going with this bid even though it was slightly higher because the Cummins engines have their uh particular problems, let's say, with how they meet the standard and they lose generation capacities along with added costs to the installation of wire and transformers and such so forth.
Yep. Excellent. All right, um anything else?
What what was gonna be the available date for the go online then?
The go online? Um August thirtieth is our set date in the schedule. Um the the capacity will be claimed in twenty twenty five, which will alleviate some of the financial burden we've taken on as the as the capacity market has gone up. August twenty four. August thirtieth, twenty four. Yep. So it takes a while. The engine won't show up until March of twenty twenty four.
All right, I guess we should be glad it's on the slow boat at all, right? All right. Okay, so tonight uh we were looking for um, you know, resolution to be introduced, if you so wish. Would anyone like to do that?
I would introduce a resolution awarding the contract for the Wyndham Power Plant Diesel Generation Equipment.
Resolution introduced by Marv, is there a second? Second by Nelson, thank you. All right, um any further comments, questions before? Okay, roll call, please.
Farag.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes. All right, the resolution passes. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we're on to the next one, which is an equipment request from the street department.
Okay, let me get to this one. You wanna kick it off, John? Why don't you just explain what it is and I'll get into the number stuff.
Good evening, John Ketsimer, Streets and Parks. Um we got a little surcharges, issues and everything with the trucks we're trying to order and everything. Um as where we're sitting now, the surcharges and the DTNAs and everything come to about ten thousand, three hundred dollars per truck extra above and beyond the quote. So it's kinda up in the air, coming to the council to get approval if we're gonna still go with this or if we're gonna try to scrap this thing and figure out what we're gonna do in the next few years. I think it's gonna get worse, so.
And if I'm to understand properly the situation, um yes, there's the surcharge. But is this the last surcharge or will there be potentially more?
There's a possibility there could be more. So if everything works out right and we can get it locked in, um hopefully there's no more. But with the COVID and everything else that's been going on and everything, it's all kinda up in the air with vehicles, no matter what, if you're getting dump trucks, pickups or anything, it's between computer chips and everything else, it's all up in the air.
With that uh surcharge, this is also, it is open ended. So as long as the trucks are out on order, basically until they're delivered, we could have additional surcharges. So by signing the paperwork, just so you know, it does not lock us into a price. So if we go down the line in a year and they say, oh, sorry, we want another ten grand and we've signed the paperwork, we're locked into it. So it's basically giving an um an open ended kind of type of price. But John is correct in that this is what they're saying industry wide. He's done a lot of research to see if there's other options available to us and all the other vendors pretty much are operating under the same parameters, the state bid, the same, actually, these trucks were bought off the state bid. So and this is still the the language that goes in there, so. Um it's not something I, you know, I we don't normally see, as John's pointed out, but I wanted you to be aware of it so that if we come back later and say, hey, sorry, we went up another ten thousand, you know, oh, I thought we had it locked in. It it does not. Just know that, so.
And uh so there's twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four and maybe, so we could be looking at a couple more years of this too, just so everyone's aware.
Um actually, he was talking about, I think it was the second or third quarter of twenty three is when our slot we're slotted for. So it's not a guarantee, but he says with this run and everything, we should be able to get our three trucks in there and get them coming and everything. Um the equipment and everything, we had that all locked in there, they're very gracious, J-Craft and everything. He has called me and talked to me the other day and that bid still is very viable and staying the same, so. We are getting by with that, so that is a upside of that.
All right, uh is the council wishing to uh to do anything about this? Need a motion?
So just some additional background, uh in twenty one, you put twenty five thousand dollars in a kitty set aside for it. And then last year, you approved up to another three seventy five that could be funded some other way. Um so there's four hundred in that budget and so with just with the boxes and the current pricing, where are you at with that?
Um just the three trucks and everything is three hundred and thirty eight thousand, six oh five. Um with all the plow equipment and everything, comes to four seventeen, zero ninety two. And that's not a consideration of the trades yet. So we still, depends on how we wanna play it. Um he was giving us about thirty grand a truck for the two trucks that we got left. And that'd be about sixty, so we might be able to find some other alternatives here, go out on bids or something like that, min bid or something, and see if we can get the the prices up a little bit more too. But this is a straight flat out with no trades or anything.
So just so you know where the budget was and kinda see where we're sitting, so. So we are still within budget if we can get something on the trades.
Okay, does anyone on the council have any question or comment?
So once again, let's put the city administrator on the spot and what does your financial side say?
John, I've talked about this a couple of times and we talked to the state on the state bid, we raised some cane with with the Department of Admin um about the price increase, because we had signed order forms last year and were a little upset about it, um but we're basically told, sorry, this is the industry act of God, essentially. So right now, I don't see another option on this. We're with still gonna be within budget if we can get that sixty on the trades, we're still in there. Even if we got sixty on the trades right now, there is a little wiggle yet to still be still with being within budget. And our trucks are fifteen years plus old and we're not gonna get them for another year. I I I hate to do it, but I would recommend that we do actually go ahead and keep this project on course, make the bit or make the quote award to them, um order the trucks and get them coming. Uh he had the locked in on the the boxes and the other snow equipment. I don't think we're gonna get that deal again, so I think we should take advantage of this and continue to move forward. But it's it's a little bit of a risk, but and I'm usually risk adverse, but right now I think we have to have to move forward, so. That would be my recommendation.
All right, thank you for that, Steve. Any further comments or questions from the council? Is there anyone who wishes to make a motion?
So I'll make a motion that we go ahead and award bids to get these three trucks ordered.
Okay, a motion by Jenny and second by Jim. Any further comments, questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, and the motion passes. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to give it all an FYI, park and wreck and everything. Had discussion about tearing down the bathrooms and everything, so I'm hoping to get them tore down this fall yet so we can start doing some groundwork. Just gonna let the council know what's gonna going on with that.
This is Island Park? Yes, okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you. Very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, and now we have a call for a public hearing in regards to our USDA fire equipment project.
Okay, well, uh we had Ed Gilmore here from USDA um not that long ago, a meeting or two ago. Um that he got some USDA gr uh funds for our radio project for the Fire and Police Department. Uh I did submit three pre-applications last year and the third one was for six wheeler boat and uh first response truck for fire. Um as Mr. Gilmore was mentioned at the last meeting, he thought they might be able to get to it possibly in the next federal fiscal year. Um Mr. Gilmore got ahold of me last week and said, I think I can squeeze out the rest of the money for your third one and if you can get it in and get it going now, and we have to do it before the end of the current fiscal year, which ends September thirtieth. So we had this call for public hearing, we got it, that's the action this evening that we're requesting. Um on the twentieth, we would hold the public hearing and then approve those letters of condition, the obligation of funds, that kinda thing. And then that would satisfy them to get it in yet again this year. Um the one thing that we will talk about at the next at the next meeting, if we proceed with this, uh we have used all the match that we set aside for the radios and turnout gear, that's done. So any additional money for these projects would need to either come out of next year's budget or reserve or something else. But we can talk about that at the next meeting. This is simply setting the hearing this evening and we'll have some additional information for you for the next meeting, but it is good news. Yeah. John spendeth money and other people are giving us some, so maybe we'll come out even.
So we have uh this public hearing to consider. Does anyone wish to introduce a resolution, the resolution?
I would introduce the resolution.
Okay, uh Marv is introducing this resolution for a public hearing on this application called the Community Facilities Grant. Uh do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Farag, thank you. Um any further questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Nelson. Grunig.
Yes.
Farag.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes. The resolution passes. Thank you. Um all right, we have some, we have two things for new business. We'll start with uh well, let's start with Marty Seifert. If I can do that first, because he's been waiting so patiently. Take it away.
Thank you, appreciate it. You can hear me now? Okay, very good. Uh my name is Marty Seifert. I am uh employed with Flirde and Hood and have been since twenty fifteen on behalf of the Coalition in Greater Minnesota Cities, which Wyndham has been a longtime member and supporter and we appreciate that. I have two handouts um that each of you has, um also the media table and at the other table. I'm not gonna speak to the to the thicker handout, that's basically an explanation of all the things the legislature didn't get done, which is longer than what they did get done. So it's a interesting reading for you on all the different subject areas that they talked about but didn't do anything about. Um the one that I will speak to is the one that's more of in a block chart that looks like this. And I'm gonna start on the front side where it talks about final outcomes for CGMC priorities. Uh these are given to us by the Board of Directors as government relations professionals to try to get things through the legislature. Um top priority, as usual, is local government aid. It's a key part of our budgets. Generally, it's between thirty and sixty percent of any given rural city's uh general fund. So it's extremely important. Um our advocacy was to update the formula and in a non-budget year, supplemental year, try to get a ninety million dollar appropriation increase. Governor didn't recommend either of those. The House did update the formula, gave thirty four million. The Senate didn't do a formula change or an appropriation increase, but they did go to um they did go to a uh uh a conference committee with the House and they compromised on a thirty million dollar increase and a home har hold harmless provision, so no cities go backwards on the old formula. But the final outcome was no tax bill. Uh the House had to bring the bill up, uh tax bills have to originate in the House of Representatives in Minnesota. And uh the Speaker did not bring the bill up for consideration, so that bill just sat on their desk and never got uh brought forward. It was completed, it just didn't get brought up for a vote. Uh the next item was uh funding for the Public Facilities Authority through the bonding bill. You can kinda look on the left side, the items that we advocated for. Governor had two hundred million in bonding roughly for the PFA. Uh the House and Senate had a bonding bill, but it was um kept secret. Nobody saw the spreadsheet, no one saw the language. Uh the House had a bill that they parked in the Ways and Means Committee and never really did anything else with. It was very heavy to the metro and our organization wasn't real wild about it, to be honest. Um so they went into private negotiations. Um we were told they were about ninety two percent done or something like that and then never released the bill and never voted on it, and then the session ended at midnight and that was the end of it. So no funding for PFA. And that's your sewer and water plants and Wyndham uh came out nicely here a couple of years ago on that. Um lead line mapping, um what that is, is uh we have a lot, you've read about Michigan, Mississippi, some of these other states with lead pipe problems. Uh health hazards and poisonous situations with their constituents with old lead pipes. So this was to try to identify um lead lines all over the state that potentially could be hazardous to health. Um we never saw a conference report on Human Services, they got about eighty percent done and then they quit or ran out of time. Childcare facilities grant, we don't know where that was in the bonding proposal, uh because they never released it, but there was no bonding bill, so that didn't happen. Uh the deed childcare grant program for training and business development, uh as far as we know, is not in the jobs bill. The jobs bill never made it to the floor regardless. The one bright note is on the second page on the top, which is broadband. We advocated for at least a hundred million. You can see all the different groups were for more money depending on on their aspect of where they were approaching things. Because the federal government showered money down on the state of Minnesota for broadband, we ended up with more than double of what we advocated for. The state had to match up what the feds wanted to do, so fifty million for state funding, a hundred and sixty federal for a total of two ten. Um broadband, the reason that passed, it was incorporated into the agriculture bill and the agriculture bill did pass. It was the only finance bill that passed, actually. All the other ones either did not get brought up or never uh passed out of the conference committee. Um next one, BDPI, that's a program that Wyndham has used very successfully over and over. Uh was not included in the bonding bill, that there are some general fund dollars that flow in there. Uh but that fund is pretty much empty um going into next year. Um same with the housing funds, none of those bills uh made it in through the final process. And then for transportation, I know that Wyndham fits in the small city street program. Um and and everybody had some skin in the game, House, Senate, Governor. The Senate probably had a little better bill. Um Senator Weber has been very helpful on that, by the way. And uh I think other than Worthington, I don't think he has any city in his district that's over five thousand people. So, you know, he's very dedicated on that. But there was no transportation bill that came out and the conference committee report was not reported back. Uh finally, on corridors of commerce, that's your major thoroughfares like your highways seventy one, sixty, fourteen, twenty three. Um you might recall a few years ago that the western Ajahannapin County, Wright County and Sherburne County ran off with all the money for a major project and the other eighty four counties got nothing. So our thought process is let's try to either statutorily or guilt the department or whatever we gotta do into spreading that money out more thoroughly. Um Minnesota's a big state and we all pay under the treasury and we all deserve some money back for our roads. Um there was no conference reports, we really don't know what the House and Senate agreed upon because we didn't have a final bill. Uh but nonetheless, the bill did not come out. The good news for next year, of course, is that it is a budget year, they must pass bills by July first to operate the departments. And so all of these proposals will be back on the table next year. Uh we'll develop our legislative agenda at the November conference, that's in Alexandria, and we would encourage all of you to be part of that. Uh that's where we kinda develop the agenda for next year. I would argue that's probably gonna look very similar to this, there's a lot of unfinished business that needs to take place. Uh that would include a bonding bill that um didn't happen this. Uh, that would include a bonding bill that, um, didn't happen this year in the bonding year and oftentimes when they skip the bonding bill in the bonding year, they come back the next year and they do it, so. Happy to stand for any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Seifer?
How do you see the election impacting the twenty-three session?
Oh, that's a great question. Um, because of redistricting, um, for probably forty percent of the legislature will be brand-new people. Some will be folks like you who have served in public office of some sort, township, city, county, mayor, school board, something. Uh, but a huge chunk of them, the analysis I've done is a lot of them have never been in office before, coming in fresh and will have to be educated. What is local government aid? You know, if, if you reduce it, that means you folks have to raise the levy or cut your services and there's not, I mean, I'm listening to the discussion on, on snow trucks and police cars and other things as I travel to these different city councils. The, the, the rural city councils are not spendthrift, wild spending, high taxing people. They are very frugal, they're very aware of the levy, they're very aware that inflation is difficult on their senior citizens and their homeowners and they don't want to raise the levies. And so we have to educate all these new people. And so the elections are, have a major impact on, our workload is going to go up exponentially because we've got to meet with all these new people and we got to tell them all about, you know, I didn't need to go tell Rod Hamilton, hey, here's what LGA is. I mean, he would tell me what it was, um, but he's retiring. And so now we have new people that are all over the place, um, both metro and rural. And we will be an outright minority now in the rural area, um, both in the House and Senate, so it's very important to have strong voices, seniority, et cetera. Governor's race, who knows what's going to happen there. Um, so that's, you know, that's an important, uh, thing too. We'll, we'll see how it goes.
Anyone else?
Very good.
All right.
Thank you.
We do have one more thing for our, uh, new business, which would be the twenty twenty-three budget workshop dates. And you guys saw the memo in our packet which we got and, uh, it looks like we have, uh, a couple of options, uh, maybe more if you come up with something, but, um, perhaps, uh, October, what? Okay. Yeah, other dates. Uh, we have, uh, a potential of having, uh, two dates on October third and fifth, which would be a Monday and a Wednesday. And that would be a longer meeting, of course, for both of those. Uh, then the other, another option is September twenty-seventh, October eleventh and October twenty-fifth, uh, for some shorter meetings and then, of course, dividing between enterprise and non-enterprise funds. So any thoughts from the council?
I think if the third and the fifth works, I think that'd be ideal.
I'll go opposite. Um, I'd rather not have three nights in a row of meetings and long meetings. Uh, and I'd rather see the September twenty-seventh, October eleventh and twenty-fifth.
All right, and.
The fifth is not good for me at all, so I kind of agree with Jenny.
Okay. And.
I agree with Jenny and I would prefer the three, three dates.
And Steve and I will go for the fifth. I'm just kidding. All right, uh, I, either one kind of works for me, so, um, I guess, uh, if you guys are, are, uh, agreeable, we can look at September twenty-seventh, October eleventh and the twenty-fifth. Is there anyone that has anything else to say about that? All right. Okay. We'll mark it down. Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. All right, uh, any old business for tonight? Anything you can think of, Mr. Nazmi? Steve? Okay. Uh, we'll go on to council comments now. We will start with Jim.
I have nothing.
Okay, Marv? Uh, Jenny?
Uh, just remind everybody that school is starting, the older classes started today and the elementary school will start on Thursday. So I think today was kind of a warm-up for traffic in that area and seeing how things flow. Uh, but I always think Thursday, once the younger kids come, that's when we see more of the traffic and more of the kids walking and, and biking and stuff like that, so just watch out for our young people, uh, keep everybody safe and hopefully they have a very safe, uh, school year this year. Um, and then also just a comment that, you know, coming into Wyndham, quick trip, boy, does that look very nice. Like, that's a nice welcoming view when you come into that side of town. Uh, I think they've made that area look very welcoming and, you know, clean, nice, and so I look forward to, uh, that opening up and having a new, uh, business in town.
And Mr. Farag.
And, um, to kind of tail on Jenny's comments, um, with school starting and all of the activities, I think it would be great if the public would go out and support the Wyndham Eagles, cheering them on.
All right, and of course, uh, Quick Trip, I understand around September ninth will be opened. It's really nice to see the band shelter well underway, uh, everyone seeing that as they go by Cottonwood Lake. Uh, Steve, do you have anything?
Uh, just in your next council packet, we'll have the preliminary budget information and the, uh, set it for the setting, the preliminary levy, so just stay in tune for that and when you get it, if you have questions, please contact Cheryl O.R.I. and reach out, so.
All right, thank you very much. And we are at the end of our city council meeting, so I'm going to adjourn it by unanimous consent.